And we are now convening in the Monday, November 27th special work session to discuss the resolution concerning an apology for the racial terror lynching of three black citizens of Salisbury, Maryland. Public comments will be heard on this topic only. Please complete a form and hand it to the city clerk. You will be allowed three minutes for this discussion. Thank you. I do invite James Yamakawa and Monica Brooks, I believe is on Zoom, as well as Ms. Christopher and Jones will be present either here or on Zoom. If you want to come forward if you are here.
I would also bring Ms. Cynthia King-Pope, who is also Garfield King's descendant as well.
We can grab one from right here. I've also invited Monica to unmute herself. She's right there. Monica, any tests? Let's make sure we can hear you.
Could you try one?
We can hear you now.
Would you mind if we can wait for Councilwoman Naeve Jackson to come back? Thank you. So if you all want to just briefly introduce yourselves and just your relation to this conversation.
My name is Latania Christopher, and this is my ancestor, Cynthia King-Pope, and we are the descendants of Garfield King. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I stand here before you today with a heavy heart as I seek your understanding, compassion, and support in addressing a matter of immense historical significance and moral importance, the lynching of my ancestor, Garfield King, on May 31st, 1898, in Salisbury, Maryland. This painful chapter in our city's history demands our attention as it symbolizes the darkest aspects of our past, ones that we cannot ignore any longer. Garfield King was a victim of a heinous crime, a crime born out of racial hatred and injustice. He was taken from the Wycomical County Jail by a white mob of over a hundred individuals, dragged to the Wycomical County Courthouse lawn, and subjected to an unimaginable act of brutality. He was hung from a tree and the mob fired 50 shots into his body. His life was taken from him, not by the hands of justice, but by the forces of bigotry and prejudice. As a descendant of Garfield King, I stand here today not seeking vengeance, but rather seeking recognition, understanding, and reconciliation. I firmly believe that acknowledging the wrongs of the past is the first step towards building a more just and equitable future and seeking an official apology from our city council. We do not aim to dwell on the past, but rather to learn from it, heal from it, and ensure that such injustices are never repeated. An official apology is a powerful symbol. It is a statement that we, as a city, are willing to confront the painful truths of our history and take responsibility for the actions of those came before us. It is an acknowledgement of the pain and suffering that Garfield King and countless others endured. It is a promise to work together to create a community where justice, equality, and respect for all are not just words, but lived realities. This apology is not just about my family, or the descendants, or the other descendants of Garfield King. It is about all of us. It is about recognizing that scars, scars of the past still affect our present and our future. It is about acknowledging that racial injustice has left an indelible mark on our society, and we must actively seek ways to heal that wound. As his descendant, I believe that it is crucial for our city to acknowledge that historical atrocity and to take responsibility for the actions of the past. An official apology from our city council was served as a significant step towards recognizing the pain and the suffering that Garfield King and countless others endured. In addition to an apology, I hope that we can discuss meaningful actions to honor the memory of Garfield King and all victims of racial violence. This could include educational initiatives that teach our community about this dark chapter, that remind us of the importance of never forgetting. Through these actions, we can ensure that the legacy of Garfield King becomes a catalyst for positive change, a beacon of hope that guides us towards a more inclusive and just future. In conclusion, I stand here not only as a descendant, but as a member of this community. I am a community that has the capacity for empathy, growth, and reconciliation. Together, we can acknowledge the past, confront the painful truths, and work together towards a brighter future where the injustices suffered by Garfield King and so many others are never repeated. Thank you for your attention and consideration. I look forward to engaging in a constructive conversation with you all on this crucial matter. Thank you.
I think my niece has said it all. The most important thing is that we're all just passing through. And as we pass through life, I landed on a plane in 1948, okay? And this is my next generation, who found it important enough to research. And she calls me and she says, Aunt Cynthia, Aunt Cynthia. And she stirs that up inside of me. But that doesn't need to be negative stirred up. It's that information that we are all, no one gets out of this world alive. And so, as we pass through, inform, the next generations love each other, and as we have better information, we make better decisions. And I want to thank you again, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for understanding that, I want to thank you, that we have to recognize pain as we do pleasure. And they're just entities. Pain helps us grow, pleasure helps us get stuck. Thank you.
Do I ever respond or you?
Okay. Okay. Oh my gosh. I'm getting my name is Monica Brooks, I'm the president of Wycomical County NAACP. I'm the vice chairman, I think it's the one person, but there was no way out of this opportunity to support this important piece of legislation today, or resolution, or whatever it is. But I feel my words are just kind from hears what you just heard. Just understand that my whole family and nation has been to support this important resolution to support the families that have been to us, to bring this resolution, to bring this matter to a place where we can say we're truly all here with one another. And it's long overdue. So I'll just be here to answer questions, but I will turn my time to James. But I thank you all so much for this back word. Yeah, but I did want to say that this has, the difficulty for the families that they expressed to us is this being approved and then not approved, approved and then paused and, and okay, some of the other things that were happening. Each time, this just raises more pain to the families, as we've heard from Jamie, who shared us. Unfortunately, the decision is out, plenty of time there is to not be given. But we need to not keep dragging this out and decide what we're going to do, sort of the families need to close their closure that they deserve, and instead of going on and what. Thank you.
James Yamakawa, Wycomical Truth and Reconciliation Initiative. Echo what Monica said. I want to thank you guys for being up here and willing to speak. It's bravery incarnate, and you guys should be very, very proud and humbled to be able to be here with you. And I, again, you know, and I wish Ms. Jamie was able to be on as the senator Matthew Williams that we were able to find. Her voice echoes, I would think, a lot of what you guys were saying too, so, but her spirit here, nothing else. Definitely want to echo upon my dissent about just the, I even want to say snail's pace of all this. I mean, the right time to issue an apology for something that's aimed at this was December 5th, 1931. Right? It's just like it took a hundred years for the federal government to declare lynching as a hate crime. I mean, stuff like this, for whatever reason, and we come up with a couple, moves at a slow pace. Doesn't make it right, but it is what it is. I will say that with regards to the resolution that NAACP and the WTRI submitted with the approval of descendants to the city council, that was a result of several months of petitioning the former mayor of Salisbury to assure his favor for the city of Salisbury. Twice we were refused, very vehemently refused. The resolution itself is definitely a jumping off. It's not, I don't know if people have been able to read the online agenda for this, but the language of the resolution that we submitted is there, including changes made by the city legal council. And some of the changes, obviously, you know, as a person who drafted it, I apologize to stare at spelling errors, but some other changes were, you know, maybe understandable from a legal perspective, but not necessarily from a moral perspective. And definitely have questions on that as well, but we need to start with what the council is planning. The only other thing I want to bring, actually, I'm going to say this will be, because this was more, it kind of depends on what happens now. So, ask away.
I have one more question. I have something else to say. I just want everyone to know that I know you're not responsible for this. It's not, I'm not coming, or my family, or anybody is coming towards y'all to say that, to admit any deal. I know y'all don't have anything to do with this, but it happened here. So we're not asking for an apology, saying that you did this. We just want to acknowledge it. We just want to heal. We just want our communities to heal. We just want us all to be able to live together, treat each other with love and respect, how it should be. Our community have some work to do. Let's start here. We need change. We need equal opportunity for all. Okay? That's all. Thank you.
Ms. President, may I real quick jump in and add a couple of comments?
Sure.
Sure. I just want to give a little history perspective because I'm the only person who, on the administrative side, is still here, because the mayor Heath is not here. But a couple of the comments that were made that are really important to understand is we have a truth and reconciliation committee. We added a member to that committee, and they've been meeting for the last three months, but this topic continues to not be discussed there, which the entire purpose of the committee is to have these tough conversations. I think it might have been brought up in passing in the last meeting, but the first two meetings, it was not brought up in discussion. And I think it's very important for this conversation to, that's why we have stakeholder groups, that's why we have these meetings, to have these dynamic discussions. And I agree that something needs to be done. I just would, I fear that piecemealing it or being short sighted by not having a robust conversation, we may miss pieces. You mentioned education initiatives. We've talked about dedications, we've talked about apologies, or resolutions, or even historical markers. Let's have the full conversation that this community deserves to have. Let's have it appropriately so that we can have strong recommendations from the mayor that we can support. I just, I don't want to rush it. I know things work at a snail's pace sometimes, but I would hate for us to rush something till they can kind of get it wrong. So that's my only comments on it.
I understand. I was the president of that committee. However, I had to resign because of my new.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you. Because of my new career with the city of Salisbury that I'm very proud of, and I plan to do my best. So I understand, but how much more do we have to talk about? You know? Before this can move forward? I'm ready to move on with my life.
The other thing is the fact that the truth committee was suggested and accepted by former mayor, two mayors ago. Like, you know, it took about a year after the unveiling of the memorial downtown. That was May of 2021. Then fast forward to the winter is when this truth committee was announced. Fast forward two years, that's what actually meant. Being pushed to get it after it started did not happen until we started bringing forward the fact that city officials were involved in this lynching. The question is, of course, the conversation should have happened. It didn't. And to put it back there to simply wait again, to ferment, and to potentially not happen, because that's just it. Like, you know, they don't joke that committees are where things go to die. You know, the fact is, there is no need for conversation when you know the truth. When you know this happened, why talk about the fact that, like, you know, that we said we need to have a conversation about this history? We will have that conversation. Do the apology anyway.
No.
They're not mutually exclusive. Yeah, so the truth committee has its place in it, but we'll kind of be on that. Monica, do you want to say anything about that? Or kind of say anything else about that?
I want to say something. I do. Excuse me, Monica. But I feel like this has been pushed back, and it's time, it is time for us to recognize the truth. The truth is right here. The evidence, everything is right here. Families had to suffer through generations because of torment and torture. And I don't see the sense of us having to push anything back. I think it should go ahead and be passed as a resolution. I'm so sick of us pacifying things and pushing things to the side when you already know what's happened. And I think these families, and not only the families, but the African-American, Asian, Hispanic families, need to have some kind of comfort in knowing that there is inclusion, equality, and justice here in the city of Salisbury, because a lot of people do not feel like they're inclusive here. And we need to have this, I'm just at wits with it because pushing it back and pushing it back, and then you guess what's going to happen? It's going to go right away. It's going to act like it never, it never happened. You can't keep brushing history and pushing it to the back. You cannot. History is history, and it must be front and center, and it must be directed to the people who, we didn't cause it, she just said we didn't cause it, but the city played a part in it, a viable part in it, a very viable part in it. And we need to rectify that. We need to clear that up. I don't want my kids later on, or my grandkids later on in life, saying, seeing something like this and say, oh, my mom, y'all didn't do anything about this? Or other people saying, y'all didn't do anything about it, she didn't clarify it, she didn't rectify it. No, we can't punish people who are not here, but just think of the families that were punished. I'm done.
Monica.
I think Mr. Mayor Taylor has something to say.
Look, good, Monica, you jumping in?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just wanted to say, let's not forget that this was a long process before we had the initiative, but also this was pushed by the fact that we are in, you are having the individual things that contributed to that, that goes. And so, this is a reckoning situation, also in response to the issue of the truth committee. The truth committee has decided, has started to go in itself. However, let's not forget that the truth committee is also, does not have power. So whatever the truth committee does, in which we're already moving, we push all this forward and nothing was happening. And we pushed forward because the truth committee had not been existent. But because of the push, now there is truth committee, right? And so, this process happened while we were trying to get the truth committee going. If we had waited to start, once the truth committee had gone, we could have witnessed that that had a base, that we should have moved. Also, since I said that the truth committee does not have power, they make it recommended. They do recommend, but it still has to be approved by a mayor of the city council. So this is a small piece where we can without a little man, because this is already going on for a long period of time. But in addition, the truth committee could be that person, that group that adds on the initiatives and builds upon the resolution. So that there's something really comprehensive, they're not mutually exclusive, you know? So you can have the one go forward to be a catalyst, where the other pieces that come there happen. The same way that, you know, my friend Shana talks about the Eric Sutton. Eric Sutton, an organization that speaks of being a hope, is a catalyst for conversations, a catalyst for events, and things that are going to come forward, and so things are used and all that. So it doesn't mean everything has to be done at one time, because everything can at one time, it's a process. So the key opens to seeing that this was far, and the wonderful community, and the connectivity, and the right dissemination, and the inclusivity that has resulted in is the community for actions.
Yeah. I was just going to say that, and I can't speak for Jake, or Jack, or why they didn't or did not, but I remember then candidate, I was then candidate Taylor. When I heard this situation, I said I would immediately issue an apology, which would be in good faith relative to the facts and the city's participation in it, and move on in a matter of good faith. I think that can be accomplished by a proclamation that I think either the truth committee could get on board with, the committee that you assign, within a fairly short amount of time. I agree with you, it shouldn't take this long. It's more of a, so, all I'm saying, for me anyway, as the mayor, I'm completely comfortable with issuing, you know, an apology on behalf of the city to what is obviously a tragic event, you know, and as a matter of good faith, move on. And I think capture the historical elements that would be included in that proclamation, and the spirit of how we would move forward. And I think everyone could find some comfort in the spirit of that document that doesn't have some of the things that I saw in, talking to the attorney earlier, because even a little bit more, I was like, oh, I'm sure I'm comfortable with that. So it's just a matter of wordsmithing it properly. I don't think that's a long journey that we could get on board with and make it something we could celebrate and move on with.
Can I ask anything about that, please? I'm going to read something by South African Archbishop Desintutu. Language is very powerful. Language does not just describe reality, reality. Language creates the reality it describes. I do want to talk about some of the language in the resolution that was edited, which is, I mean, again, this is the conversation. A proclamation is, while it may be synonymous in some ways with the resolution, they are different in some ways as well, at least in the feel of them, you can proclaim national friendship. You can proclaim that, as we did, like in the day, that this is now, you know, like municipal workers, which is a great fact. A resolution, proclamation is a ongoing, resolution is an ongoing thing. It's resolved to do something.
Well, you're trying, in my opinion, you're trying to turn it into an action document, and I'm trying to turn it into a celebratory moment where we say, as a city, this occurred with city assets potentially, in some, you know, not just the building, but the rope certainly, with city employees, and we want to put a period behind it and say, we apologize. But you're trying, it sounds like you're trying to turn it into an action document, is what I'm, I guess what I'm.
Well, I think truth and reconciliation is an action. I consider it, when you talk about, like, you know, loving our neighbor, love is a verb if you thought of that. I will say that some of the, some of the changes, obviously, it makes sense, like, you know, repeated statements, the fact that's by the city council, some of the stuff taken out, again, stuff you may have had concern with. The resolve by the city of Salisbury that formally apologizes to, for its historical role in targeting the larger black community of Salisbury during and after these acts of racism and terrorism, and forced negligence in not protecting its own citizens. Also, that although those that committed the aforementioned crimes are no longer alive, the institutions that they represented still exist. That all, as institutions, they are supposed to serve to protect all the community regardless of race, and they bear a responsibility towards the legacy, towards telling the truth. Those were struck out of the resolution, which, again, is a part of the conversation. But what does that say? Does it say that, like, you know, you want to make sure that, again, this is not about like punitive, this is about telling the truth, that there is a responsibility that these organizations have?
I think we can accomplish both things. We can do a proclamation that acknowledges the truth and issues an apology on the city's behalf. Perhaps we take a wordsmith opportunity to do that, and then if you can't get behind it, then we'll have a problem. But I think we can accomplish both outside of this document.
And again, it's not my decision or my decision to do it, it's yours.
I just, I'm sorry. I just want to say one thing, see, because there is one thing that, as growing up, I was always told that it was vigilantes that had just randomly, were just taken and lynching young black men. And as we started to study, it didn't just happen in Salisbury, okay? It happened all throughout this country. It was very systematic. Number one, it was systematic, like, when, when black families had, like, 12 kids, their babies, they would send to school because everybody had worked in the fields, but these babies, these last two, were targeted because we can't have young black men being educated because you got to keep, so, you know, I can make that sound really, really, but here's the thing about that. Why we want this publicly addressed is because the, it's proven that the law officials were involved in that. So if that would ever start to happen again, this city, all cities would know that this is going to come back on them, so it wouldn't be as easily to repeat this. See, if we don't address things, life is a circle like a boomerang. And it's, and sometimes we spend a lot of time being mad, being angry, accusing, no, address. No, address this, how this happened, none of us were here, but we were affected. Some of us benefited, some of us tortured, but it's all happened, the universe allowed it to happen. How do we, as living, breathing descendants, legals, how do we take this and say, and then this help other cities to grow? Because we, we know we still got a lot of work, and we're not trying to blame, but we want to address what is factual. And it wasn't just random, it was systematic, and because of that, an organized council could say, not under our watch. We want to make it in writing that we do not stand behind vigilante actions this randomly killing young people and trying to make it justified.
Yeah, I would only add that neither document would, if that were gonna happen, would, would, would preclude that. Whether we sign this agreement, or that agreement, or that doc, your point is a real one, I mean, if you, that, that's your fear, but neither document would actually preclude that, happen, happening. So, I think what we need to do is just come together with a proclamation and, 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 and acknowledge what happened, and, um, issue an apology in part of the city.
So, I wanna jump in, um, if, if I may, um. Some of what I'm hearing, I don't wanna speak too much, because again, this is something that you all are bringing to us, and, and I wanna make sure that I'm listening more than speaking. But what I'm hearing is this, these two paragraphs that was, um, that was, you know, straight from, from the resolution, that, that, that has some meaning to it. And, and, and it's, it hits on the emotional piece, and I, I wrote down, when you read, uh, Latonya, about fifty shots, that, I don't know why, but that, that really stopped, you know, stopped me, and, and, um, which is why I, I don't wanna, you know, and, and I know you all have been doing this for a long time, but to, to, you know, myself at least, it's, it's just been, this conversation's been, you know, a couple of weeks to a month for me, and, and this is an emotional thing, and as we're sitting in this, in this building, and yet I'm sitting in this seat on council, I mean, that, in just a short amount of time, I wanna make sure that we, we draft this correctly, that we are making sure that we are educating Salisbury and the surrounding areas about what was done, the truth, the hard truth, the ugly truth that was done, and also educating that, again, because, not, not justifying that, but that was done, and yet we are gonna move towards having the hard conversations, and what can we do moving forward? So, I, I wanna, I want to be respectful of the, of the tenure that you all have committed to this, but also, I, I think it's my diligence to make sure that we are carefully crafting this document to truly reflect the hard work you have done, and also making sure that our citizens understand the grave nature that happened in this very building and in our city, uh, to a lot of our family members.
Yes, and I just wanna say that it was horrible. My ancestor never got a proper burial. My ancestor's parents, which was my great-great uncle, he was my great-great uncle, his father didn't pick him up because he was scared, it was called terror lynchings in the community, in the black communities, and he couldn't come outside after a certain time, or they were gonna get lynched as well. This had, this affected my genera- generations before me, and this is affecting me to death.
And what I, what I want to say is, if we were to write this in a history book,
Right.
Would we take any of this out? Will we delete any of this? If we were to put this in a, a book, a educational format? Will we take any of this out? So, why would we wanna take this out in the instance of a resolution or a proclamation? It happened. And we have to face it, and the only way we face our fears is if it's right here in front of us. We have to face what happened. You can't cover this up. It's not to be covered up. It's to be, look, we got, we all need healing. We all need healing, not just me, not just African Americans, we all need healing. Because this has affected us all.
And, and, and that's actually a really important thing, because people think, okay, this is obviously an issue with trauma for the black community, but trauma exists for the white community for this too.
That's right.
The fact is, you cannot dehumanize a whole group of people and not dehumanize yourself.
Yes.
So, the fact is, uh, is that people who have grown up here have grown up with the idea that it, that this was, they may not obviously say it was okay, but like, this happened and it was justifiable in the moment. And when you grow up with that, that, that causes a change in thinking that is passed down through generations. Um, again, the, when we talk about the Holocaust, uh, Germans take a lot of ownership for that history. It, they, they literally say, like, you, you cannot have this symbolism, and, 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 you know, we will teach this as much as we can. In America, a country founded on white supremacy, to talk about it is to make it real, and to make it real, we need to have just about. And we collectively, like, you know, do not want to, because, again, it's gonna cost us. And, like, the thing is, it already is costing us something. It's costing us our humanity to not talk about this, our soul.
I don't wanna push you back no further.
Miss. Yes, yeah, I had a, I had a question.
Actually, I, I had said, wanted to speak earlier, but I would like to. I just wanted to clarify, because we have our attorney here, I would like to. That's what I've been trying to get to, is I would like to ask why these passages were removed, if there was any specific reasoning, um, and, and, and what we could do to get them back in, um, that would leave them mostly unchanged, because honestly, you know, the foundation for a conversation is truth, and until we have the truth out there, there is going to be no conversation, there is no conversation, you know? And I say this is coming from someone, and I just know this on my father's side of the family, my mother's side came from Virginia, I can guarantee you, they were involved in stuff. But my family, I have actual documented evidence of my family, because my father was from the, from England, uh, in, in perpetuating harmful stereotypes, I have documented evidence of family doing this, you know? So, I, I, I understand it's uncomfortable, it's hard when it hits you in the face, but you have to sit in it, you have to sit in that discomfort, and you have to face it. Because if you don't, like you said, we all need healing from this, and there is no healing, you know, if you're gonna set a bone, it's gonna hurt for a second. But if you don't do it right, it's going to, it's going to fester, it's gonna get infected, it's gonna get, get worse, and you might end up losing your leg altogether. So, I really, I, I just, I, I want to make sure that there are, are real solid reasons as to why this language was removed, and if it, if we don't think that those reasons are good enough, you know, what portions in particular were particularly objectionable legally, and how we can move forward in incorporating it back into the, the document.
Well, you guys know the decision makers.
Right.
But I mean, I just also look at it from a legal standpoint.
Right, and also masking.
And then in terms of taking on, um, unnecessary liability is why that language was struck, okay? Um, I feel like frankly, the first paragraph that was struck in its entirety is addressed through the first, be it resolved, paragraph. Um, is, is the issue that we need an affirmative statement that the city was negligent in not protecting its citizens? Because to me, it's already addressed in the paragraph prior to that, that, that particular issue. Um, so I, I think it's a bit redundant unless the issue is about acknowledging negligence. So, is that a concern?
Question is, yeah, I mean, yeah, it is, because, like, you know, and here's the thing where we're talking about the problem with how we define who we're talking about, because again, we're not talking about individuals, we're talking about institutions. Um, and I, and, again, when, when I read the changes, I was like, okay, that makes perfect sense from a legal standpoint, why those are all stuff? I mean, I get it. Um, again, what is legal is not necessarily what is moral in some cases, but I was like, it's not moral of it. Like, you know, you, you have to think about, okay, what, how, how, why does the city, how does the city wanna protect itself? But also, what does it gain by doing so? And what do, does the conversation lose by doing so? And I understand, like, you don't wanna have unnecessary liability, because it was the city says it targeted the entire black community, which is the definition of a racial terror. There's the fact that it's not just against the individuals involved, it's against their families, it's against the communities. Matthew Williams' body was dragged to the black neighborhood of Salisbury.
Yes, it was.
Um, it, it, there are message cards. They're designed, just like, in some days, you see, you see the videos of police brutality nowadays are shared constantly, the message shared by them is that your life does not matter. When they, when they lynched these, these young men, like, you know, they, they were telling the rest of the community that this will happen to you if you get out of line. And so, it's sticky, because like, you know, it, it, it's not like, you know, you can't, it's, 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 it's a threat of something, not necessarily an act that happened. Now, the question whether or not this act's happened. We talk about the racial Georgetown, Matthew Williams, like, you know, that, that was part of his community. And like, you know, there were, there were plans to take it out, essentially through the, the installation of thirteen fifty. Um, the, so yes, from a legal standpoint, you don't wanna draw that line, because you want that, you want the facts of what are, what are, is like point A to point B to point C. But the way these conversations work is the fact that we can't always connect those things, because the history has been hidden. Because, like, you know, people refuse to talk about us. And so, is, does, does it require a certain amount of trust? Absolutely, understandably legally, I understand why you took it out, though. So, that's, that's why I look at it.
Yeah, I'm not advocating one way or another, you asked, my, my role here as, is as an attorney, and so I'm giving legal advice, it's up to you whether you want to accept that or reject that, or how far you want to take it.
Can, can I ask you one question? Beyond this issue, the truth and reconciliation, is it your aspiration to get into the schools and kind of educate kids about? Here's my challenge, you know, there are kids that, I bet you, if I picked fifty kids in the average high school and put them in a room, they couldn't tell you what decade in the nineteenth century the Civil War was even fought. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, while that's a, while we're focusing on an important issue, I think that educating kids about the bo- embodiment of, you know, the Civil War and why it was fought, and, and, you know? So, is that aspirational, is that what you guys are planning on doing as addition to this issue? Or is this issue the only issue you're focused on?
One day.
One day?
One day.
Okay.
Um, it should be in the history books. It should. It surely should.
You mean?
All history books.
Yeah.
It was watered down. I didn't get taught nothing about this stuff.
Yeah.
I was taught that Christopher Columbus was a hero. Right. So, I feel as though, along with the racial terror lynchings, they said, let's tell them a story in the history books.
That's what I'm asking is, are you, are you about to, are you, are you just trying to, trying to educate? No, you're not.
I mean, I, I educate my children.
What I'm just saying is, just.
And, and I want all other black children to be educated
Yeah.
on their history, but are we trying to do it today or tomorrow?
No, it's not gonna happen.
Right, right, no. In the future, I hope one day, it is in the history books. I want my children and my children's children to know. I don't want it to be all these years when we, we found out, you know? When, when this happened, nobody said nothing. They were scared to death, they were scared to even mumble a word about it. We're not quite, we're gonna be quiet no more. I'm gonna be perfectly honest. Talk about it. Perfectly honest, there's not a lot of black history here, none. That, that, I, I go online and look about black leaders in this community, and you find very little of it, very, very little of it. If they committed a crime, you can find that, but if they done something well, you don't find it. Uh, and, and it's the truth in this, we need to know. The people need to know that this happened, it's real. And there's nothing you can do about it, but move forward. But in order to move forward, you have to recognize that it happened. We can't keep pushing this off, we can't keep saying, oh, we're gonna change this, we're gonna edit this, we're gonna do this. You can't keep doing it, because after a while, you're gonna take the whole thing away. You're gonna edit it so much, it's gonna be.
No, I mean, I, I, like, to, to, to speak to your exact question, like, you know, do you feel that that educating, uh, you know?
I, I wish it was the scope of the committee's purpose, is what I'm trying to get at.
Well, I mean, like, like, again, the, the truth committee of city Salisbury can do with that, I have a promise. I mean, like, you know, it's like, the, the fact is, like, you know, what we were talking about here is the apologies to the city. Do, I, do now, from a personal perspective, do I think that this needs to be taught in our public schools? Yes.
Yes.
Because the fact is, it's not just, I mean, it's not just, like, you know, young black students learning about history, it's young white students learning about their history as well. Because the fact is, like, you know, this is, um, again, like, you know, we talk about Georgetown neighborhood, there's so many stories coming out of there, that, like, you know, um, if you read Lyndon Dwyer's book around the con about Georgetown, there's a lot of history there that is good to know, that mural of, uh, of the churchy, very important, tells you a lot about the history of what's going on here. But the fact is, so much of the, the push of nationally to so-called erase history from our, from our schools is about erasing what white people did. And not, and, like, you know, they're fine talking about Harriet Tubman, as long as you talk about certain parts of her. They're fine talking about Martin Luther King, as long as you talk about, I had a dream, and not, like, you know, like, the, like, the fact that white people assassinated him. They're not, like, you know, it's, it's fine to talk about, uh, like, you know, the parts that don't make you think that maybe things need to change. And, like, you know, so, yes, do I think that this needs to be taught in schools? Yes, because it took me thirty years to start paying attention, and I don't want my kids, like, I, I obviously I teach my kids and stuff, and, like, you know, but they don't learn in the schools. Your kids don't learn in the schools. So, yes, we, we, there's only so much we can do as parents to teach them. And, like, you know, we can, but, like, you know, the fact is, if the kids can learn, do better than we can, then they will go so much further, and, like, you know, it's not about indoctrinating them or anything like that, like, you know? But, yeah, but that's beyond the scope of this conversation.
Excuse me. May I have a word or two, please? Um, this is, I'm glad we're having this discussion, and thank you for being here, seeing everybody. I see you, Monica, hi Monica. Um, a couple of things, um, has anyone here on the council have read the, uh, The Silent Shore by Dr. Charles Chavis Jr.? Has anyone read that book on, on the council here? Anybody?
It's on my to-read list.
Okay. I'm on, I'm on my fourth time of reading it, and I want to tell you this. Um, I have a corkboard at home, uh, 'cause I'm, I like, I'm a story and I like to do things. I have, uh, a timeline, a map, pictures if I could get them off the internet, of course, pictures, and, and little pinpoints of things, and, uh, the tragedy is real, and there's no doubt about that. And, uh, Dr. Chavis does an amazing job, one of the, outside of a, a book I've read about Ida B. Wells, I, I think his, uh, penmanship of this was absolutely, actually, I've read it four times. I, I, that's rare, uh, but to say this, I wanna balance it by, one of my things with, that this needs the most dignity we can give it as a city, and one of the things that I'm looking at is the resolution versus the, a proclamation. I, it's a discussion for what the word, it sounds like wording is gonna be. I'm not saying, I, I don't know what that's gonna be yet, we're all still hashing that out. But I had said from the September eighteenth meeting, having read this book at that time already three times, um, and had recently picked it up again, seeing that this was coming back up for a general discussion, um, that this is such an important topic, and, and, and it understood the historic tragedy, absolute tragedy of this, uh, not just here nationally, systemically, in every way you could talk about it. And our governor's office at the time let us down, 'cause after the governor's office. And our governor's office at the time let us down because after the governor's office allowed for and, and gave permission for an investigation, sent a man down here to do an investigation who posed to be a, a boxing, um, I guess, manager. And, yeah, and, um, and then when he took all this information back, uh, it was not discovered, uh, until Dr. Chavis actually dug it up. It was in the corner in a box down below in our governor's building. So the culpability of the tragedy of all this is all, it's, trickles all the way down to everybody. So, um, now, I, in my physical shoes and where I stand in this is I think it's coming down to, for me, giving this the most dignity. And in my experience and in my understanding in the history of Salisbury, no outside agency, you know, I, I've explained this to Ms. Brooks and James Pryor and everything, has ever written their own resolution to give to the city to read to them as an apology that doesn't seem, uh, the dignity that it's worth in regards to them writing an apology for us to read to you. The, it's never happened, there's never been a resolution written like that. The, the more profound, uh, documentation for this type of situation is actually a proclamation. Now, how, now how that's gonna be worded, I, I don't know. That's why we're here discussing all this. I don't know what, you know, what it's gonna look like. But when it comes from the face of the city, and Mayor Taylor has explained that he would, he would do a proclamation. We don't know what the wording's gonna be yet, we're all still hashing that out. Um, to me is the most dignified, it's the face of the city. It's not one person at the council, it's not five people at the council, it's from the head and the face of the city. And to, in where I stand, in my own experience, which is this much compared to what this book says, okay? I just think it's the most dignified process. Now, I understand that some people, it feels like it's a snail's pace. And in the council's experience, we've recently received, we, like, September the eighteenth was our first experience receiving even this information. So prior experiences or, or approaches to any mayor, either be Mayor Day or Mayor Heath, was not, that was not privy to us until just this fall. So as far as putting this into a perspective and a timeline and a snail's pace, actually I think the council has done a pretty good job bringing it forward, uh, from, from Ms. Jackson on to bringing it to the actual council, to bring it back to the beginning of trying to get it done through other leadership at some point. We've come to a point now, I think the discussion is hashing out wording for the most dignified document that a city can give in a proclamation. And that's, like I said again, I don't know what the, I'm not saying I know what the words of that are. I don't know if there are words to even apologize for something of this nature. I'm not even sure that truly exists. Um, I think it's only by the people's behaviors that we see that. But when I'm a clinical social worker, I don't know, sometimes there's not words for how we feel. So what I think at this point in time, we've hashed out a lot, it seems like to me, the next step it sounds like hashing out verbiage and, and this coming from the most dignified place that the city can offer, um, which would be, uh, and I hear Mayor Taylor saying that he, he would issue an apology, he has no problem with that, and understanding the, the tragedy of this. I, I think there may be, we need to somehow figure out more discussions when it sounds like the verbiage is what it seems like. And we're not gonna get there tonight.
Right.
But I think that's the crossroads we're at, at this point in time. And I do deeply thank you for coming to share this. And I do feel that we are on the path that you are seeking.
Thank you.
So this was actually my question earlier, um, and then of course Mayor Taylor kind of jumped in. But since we are now, again, new administration, new, new mayor, would, what are, what are the thoughts, again, of council still holding this, um, versus the mayor's office? I, I know that that was your first intent was first through the mayor's, but again, again, we can spend hours talking about the, the, that, that passed, but we're talking about this passed.
Yeah.
But that passed. But again, now that, and again, Mayor Taylor did, uh, comment on that for, you know, in, in his actual campaign, what, what are the thoughts of, and again, we know that council is, wants to be a part of this, but, you know, from, from now, what is the standpoint that you all hold, given that the mayor is, uh, you know, in tune with having this conversation and releasing something from his office as well?
I just wanna say one thing, and that is, uh, this city has always wanted to be a destination, like Ocean City. If this was handled correctly, a complete meeting of the minds where, just like the Harriet Tubman, just like craft, just like the ocean, this, because see, it wasn't just Salisbury. This was systematic throughout. And for this city to be the first to recognize this, but when you recognize it, you recognize that it was pervasive all throughout. But this is the first. You want to be the first when you're talking about marketing. So what I'm saying is, you would have had the opportunity to do the right thing and put your city on the.
Actually wouldn't be the first.
Wouldn't be first.
An apple is not a, um, it's a place that's actually deep salvaged on it.
Okay, okay.
But you know, but.
So it is marketable.
No, no, but, 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 but you see the right point in the fact that, like, you know, this should be something that is, can become, can, can become something good out of something bad. Like, you know, so, so, and, and, yeah.
Absolutely.
If I may, real quick again, can we get some clarification, uh, legally from the attorney on what the difference between a proclamation and a resolution are? I think having, having that legal definition would go a long way to deciding how, what route we take and, and what would be better suited for what the descendants are looking for. So can we just define those for everybody?
Mayor Taylor kind of hit the nail on the head when he said a proclamation is more of like a statement, whereas a resolution is a form of action.
Right, okay. So do we just want to give words or do we want to take action? I mean, that is ultimately the question. Uh, a proclamation is words and, and, and a resolution is taking action and.
And in addition, council would have to write on it unless a proclamation, right? Which is a threat. So it would be more of a legislative action as well.
Right.
So I, I feel that it needs to be a resolution.
Okay.
Action, because this is not just for gay, this is for our community.
Good enough.
This is for Salisbury.
I agree with you.
We need, we all need healing, we all need to be unified. How are we gonna be unified if we have this separating us? Cause that's what it is, separation. We want to unify, we want to grow. When I leave here, I want to see my city thriving and unified.
Great, go.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
And, and in order to do that, we have to all come together to thrive.
Monica?
Yes, ma.
This, um, this is a point of clarification. Um, we submitted a resolution in August of twenty. Um, this goes, I think, I think it was August or, um, this recommendation. But I also, um, just wanted to say, in, in the last, I guess, couple of months is when we, I guess, when, I think it was, uh, Councilwoman Lake, um, was talking about, you know, giving this, um, she's saying to me, and you talked about writing it, and I was excited for the council. Um, whether or not, I mean, I know now that we're discussing that, um, Mayor, um, Taylor is making a statement, or whether the council does, you know, the resolution, that's a very good question. Um, my, my question is, to the fact of, if all of you all came back and said, if you tried to do this after a month ago and, um, Councilwoman Shills is writing it. So, and, and Councilwoman Lake asked me about, you know, working on your own, you all coming in for something. I wanted to know, have you all started that process? That you said you wanted to start writing, you wanted to work on your own? Because if you had decided to work on one, those of you who are in there, then access to me that you're, you accepted those regulations that it is, or you have a reason to leave. So my question is, if you are going, if you're doing a resolution and it really is, and you know, a place for you all to give your input, um, which personally I don't have a big to do about, but I think, you know, also this, you know, and the family, you know, the family says. You know, when, when was that starting and where did you turn that on?
Well, I'll.
Sorry, but.
I'll answer first and say that, you know, I said at the time and I, I have maintained that I am, I am good with the, the resolution that you guys brought to us. I think that, that it was good with the, with, you know, just the spelling corrections and things. Love you, James, but, um, but, you know, I, I think that, um, you know, as move, you know, a, as it is, I, I'm, I'm good with it. I think that, I think that it's, it's worthwhile, it covers a lot of the history. If we want to add more history to it, we can. Um, you know, I think that, I can't recall if everybody's, everybody, all the descendants are named in this or not, if that's something that we would like to see. I think, yeah, we had, we had, um, Latonya and Genie are named. I, I would like to include, uh, yeah, I'd like to include your, yeah, I'd, I'd like to include you, if that's okay with you. I, I think that, you know, making those kind of edits are, which are minor, I think I'm good with it, other, other than that, if there is, if there's anybody else that we think that should be named, I would like to include them as well with their permission. So, I mean, going forward, if there's anybody else. But other than that, I am good with it. I have, I've ma, I've maintained that from the, from the first discussion we had about this topic, so.
Okay, I'll leave you after any comments, I'm very excited, sorry.
It's fine, thank you.
April?
I'm good with the resolution. I'm, I'm good with it. I, I simply, for the reason is, the proclamation recognizes a special event. There's nothing special about this other than it was done. You, how you celebrate somebody being terroristically murdered, there's, there's no celebration here for me. You know, I mean, it's a day, to me like morning. So I'm just at the resolution part because we're stating facts and things that have happened. And then we just go on with it. And I was with it from the very beginning myself, so I'm still there with the resolution.
Now, I knew, I knew Mayor Taylor had some, you, you had some.
No, I was, uh, when you were saying you were okay with the resolution, you were saying okay net of the legal review? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I'm okay with it, with, with, with the basic edits that were made, um, that were made, that were made as far as spelling errors and things like that. I would like to see us include, um, i- if, if that paragraph or two paragraphs that were removed, if, if they just need to be reworded.
That was my, yeah.
Yeah, if they need to be reworded, I'm okay with that, depending on how the rewording is. But, I mean, if there's, if there's some, if there's a suggestion that you guys have for how that could be reworded to be a little bit more acceptable, I think that's, that's probably, I, I'm fine with looking at that, reviewing that and going from there. Um, this is obviously going to be a, a conversation, this is not, it just a, yeah, I, I, I'm ready to move forward on it. I think that we have been discussing it, I know that you guys have been discussing it for ages and I know you guys want, you know, not, no pun intended, but you guys want resolution to this as well.
And it may be the first time, it's the first time for everything. And this resolution, not just, like I said before, it just doesn't mean a lot to the African-Americans. It means a lot to all of us because inclusion comes into this. Um, equal, equality comes into this. And then we give people something to think about when they even think about doing something of this sort to anybody. You, you, it, it's a thought pattern, it's a thought process and people have to think about, you know, what they do before they do it, because I don't care what you do, it's gonna follow you. So it's following.
Yeah, I guess all, all I was trying to make the point of was that I don't think we should, um, maybe we should listen to council relative to the legal point, just, you know, to get some proof.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, no, that's fine. I mean, like I, like I said, I, I was, I, I, you know, I'm willing to have that conversation and, and, and look at any possible suggested edits of that, rather than just all in all striking it. I think that if there's something that we can salvage out of those com, out of those two paragraphs and put back in, that would be great. Um, that's good.
So.
Table for now.
Yes, first procedurally, we need a law for public comment.
That's what, yes, yeah.
And then, um, I think we could bring it back to a work session with, like, conditions and then you can decide about from there, about moving it forward.
Yeah.
Yes.
Procedurally, that's how it works.
Okay, sounds good.
I want to make sure, yeah, I want to make sure I give you all the, in, in the final comments or any other thoughts, concerns, questions or?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for handing us out. Thank you for understanding and having that empathy and unconditional positive regard because I'm a social worker as well. Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your courage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments?
Yep.
Yes.
You just go ahead, if you want to.
They'll, they'll come up to you.
All right, so this time we'll move on to the public comment section of this wor, uh, special meeting and if I have one here, anyone else says, okay, I'm gonna hand it to our city clerk. And as a reminder, if you want to, if you could please state your name and your address for the record and you have three minutes to speak on the above conversation. At this time, I'd like to.
Just a reminder, if you'd like to leave a public comment, there's a form to fill out on the little table over there.
Thank you.
No worries.
All right, so Reverend, uh, Margaret, is it Brussel?
No, Reverend Margaret Brack.
Could you repeat it?
Reverend Margaret Brack.
Brack, thank you so much.
I'm starting my writing here, so I have to.
No worries. I was trying, so. Thank you so much.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Um, I'm very honored because I am the pastor at Faith Lutheran and James Yama Kala is one of our parishioners. And I'm also the priest at the Episcopal Church St. Albans. And I moved here last year on November sixteenth. So I've been here one year and I have friends all over the nation from working in national groups and I've had at least seven come to visit in the last year. And there are different races and I'm gonna tell you unfortunately. Now, I also, I should say, I work on the, with the Del, Delaware, Maryland Racial Reconciliation, um, team. Um, and sometimes I'm the only one from the eastern shore. And I find myself always having to, to, uh, make not excuses, but people always say, well, I'm sure you guys aren't doing it. And, um, this actually came up here, uh, the idea that doing a resolution of this type would get more people to come here because everyone always says to me, oh, I was in western Maryland where there were Confederate flags almost every, every other street and our town was only a mile and a half long. And, um, they said you went from the spit into the fire. And I said, no, 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 Salisbury is different. Um, and we've always felt that because it is different. And, uh, my husband and I just enjoy seeing how people work together, how there are people of different races together. But what I have to always explain. But what I have to always explain is what happened when that whole area was cleared to where all the African Americans were moved out, that's one of the ones to discuss. And this kind of statement, this resolution would do the same thing as I'll take people down by the lynching, you know, the, I forgot what you call it, the marker. That's there, and I just took somebody by a beacon of hope. Those are signs that make a big, major difference. And one of the things is, I actually got somebody to come here in August and do all their shopping for school on their way to Ocean City. So wouldn't that be beautiful that people could come and stay in Salisbury because we've made a statement that is different than the entire eastern shore? So that it's not in the fire any longer. And I think that's really what I wanted to say mostly, is that I am happy that I moved here. And I'm very proud because if you looked at my congregations, I only have a couple of people of color because it's not important here. And sometimes when I don't have my color on, I don't get treated as well. But that's not all the time. So I just want to do anything that we can do to make that statement that something that was done in the past is wrong and more than apologize, change.
Thank you so much. Lynn Bratton?
Lynn Bratton, Salisbury, South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. I've worked in the school system for thirty-seven years. I've seen, I've worked in the school system for thirty-seven years. I've seen so many changes in those thirty-seven years of inclusion, equality, inclusion, opportunity. We have so many groups that have experienced that change, whether it be our wonderful representatives on the council, people that have now risen to leadership roles in our schools and in our businesses, women who have risen to leadership roles. I first got one in nineteen seventies, not even when I first got married, in nineteen seventy-three. My credit card had to be cosigned by my husband. And as a single woman, I would have not gotten credit. Seeing where I am now and the boundaries that I've had to live over as a divorced, a widowed woman, and only knowing the shoulders that I stand on from my mom and dad who fought hard and long in Somerset County for equality and taught me the color, it's the character. It's who you are and what you mean. Have a couple of things I would like to say in closing, and I'm getting tired. I've got chemo tomorrow. I do appreciate all the comments because they were spoken from the heart. They were not spoken with an ulterior motive, I don't think. I felt they were pure and pure honesty and truth and history. You can notice that even the Somerset County folks were involved in some of that history if you read the documents. So I appreciate that, that we're all talking about it. I do know that there are some already written and approved resolutions in our state from other municipalities that have been shared with our city council persons from a gentleman that had to go home earlier tonight. And I would ask you to at least read those and take them under consideration. So it's really easy to edit instead of starting from scratch sometimes. And you've got a document that has already been presented, you've got some others out there that you can look at, and you pull the best and the most legal from all of them. And then you refer to our legal counsel that we are doing it the right way and not a knee jerk reaction that won't be the right thing in another five or ten years. The other thing that I do want to ask, and I don't have an answer, the actions that happened in Salisbury were done by a group of people. And yes, they got a rope from this building, and it happened in our city. But I do think we need to reach out to our county and network and partner with them and make this a resolution that stands for our county as well as our city. Because the people that were here that night and in those ensuing days threatening and intimidating were not all City of Salisbury residents. I don't know that for a fact, but I would kind of bet one, a non-existent next paycheck on it because I think it's the truth. They were farmers, they were people in the community, they were business people, but they didn't all live in our city. They were from our county. So we need to reach out to our county and hope that we can partner in a really strong, effective statement, be it a resolution or a proclamation. I don't, I can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening. I think, but I do know that there's a lot to be done.
Thank you. Donna Turnan-Mean?
My name is Donna Turnan-Mean.
Oh, thank you.
Donna, I have property at Seven Oak McBride, and you are in Brooklyn, Texas. I am not be as eloquent as anyone else. I grew up in New York State where, yes, we did learn things in school, but not the whole truth because I was in the north. I think your question about a hope to bring this to light in our schools honestly is inappropriate because you don't have control over schools neither do the people sitting there. Should it be, yes. I think if we were to look at this as someone else, if I'm of German heritage and I shudder to think that I might have some ancestors, I might know that I can track it back, who, Jews. Just because that's what was going on. I think an apology and changes and admission of wrongdoing comes from a place of strength, not from a place of weakness. I think weakness and cowardice is, oh, well, we really don't want to address this because, you know, we might hurt somebody's feelings. We might alienate someone who's important in our community or was important in our community. I think change and apologies and recognition of wrongdoing is true, truly comes from strength. And I think that's something that I'd like to ask you all to think about. I was admiring that Kino dog over there. I don't know if he's a personal or a fire department dog. Let's say he was a fire department dog. And I went outside and he mauled me, or she, I don't know, sorry. I don't think that there would be an issue with the city saying, oh, my gosh, we apologize that that happened. We will put into place some processing and some training so this does not happen again. Please think of it in that type of way. Don't get the sense that, excuse me, don't get that sense, but think of it in here and now, what happened, if something you're in it to the city, city employees, happened at this point again. I told you I wasn't going to be very eloquent, put those on my phone.
Thank you so much. James Yamakawa?
Okay, before I go any further, I promised Monica I would do this. Friday, December eighth is our second Public Town Hall on the Georgetown neighborhood. It'll be held at Inspire One Gallery, just up north, past Chipman and right around the United Way, that little park, little strip mall area there. Six to eight P M. And come, and there will be discussion, there'll be presentation, and there will be car talk. To speak to Ms. Bratton's, thank you for, thank you for always being active and engaged. The answer is yes, of course the county was involved. I mean, the fact is, like, you know, I live in Fruitland. I'm not a resident of Salisbury. But obviously, everything we do anywhere within, like, you know, twenty miles of Salisbury is affected by what Salisbury does. Also, the residents of the city of Salisbury are also a county resident, so it's, there's a little bit of overlap there. The sheriff and the deputies at the time were also involved. There's evidence that the sheriff's deputies from Lewis came down. The state attorney was passing information to the mob during the grand jury investigation. The fact is, yes, these are a lot of things that are involved here. And to talk about just one small aspect seems like incorrect. When you say bring the county on board, if it took us this long to get the city to pay attention? And the city of Salisbury is ostensibly a very progressive place. And like, you know, we all live or work here. We all here for a reason because we love this community. To speak a little bit more about, I've been accused sometimes of being a bit of antagonist to folks here. I'm not going to apologize for that because, actually, yeah. If it made you feel bad, I'm sorry. I think that when you tell the truth, how you tell it matters, but that you tell it matters more. I will say that everything I do, I do out of a love for everyone because that is what we are called. I thank my pastor and my council president for being here today because it reminds me that this is all of our Christian duty, to speak out. I want to leave with words, again, words better spoken by someone else. Bishop Desmond Two, again, true reconciliation is never cheap or it is based on forgiveness, which is costly. Forgiveness in turn depends on repentance, which has to be based on an acknowledgement of what was done wrong and therefore on disclosure of the truth. You cannot forgive what you do not know. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this special meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for attending.